All right, it's six P M. March ninth, twenty twenty-three, Town of Kyoto, regular meeting. Called to order, call roll.
Huckabee. Burton.
Yes.
Goff. Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number three, pledge allegiance. Number four, discuss the vote to approve all minutes for February twenty twenty-three. How much do we approve all minutes? February.
Burton.
Yes.
Goff. Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number five, discuss a vote to approve all February twenty twenty-three bills for general fund.
Burton.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number six, discuss a vote to approve all February twenty twenty-three bills for street and alley fund.
Burton.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number seven, discuss and vote to approve all February twenty twenty-three bills for fire, bargain fund. No second.
Burton.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Number eight, discuss a vote on revised budget for visiting year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Come Jordan.
Yes, your name.
Okay, on your, in front of you somewhere, by your papers, there's. Well, no.
Yeah, it's just our.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So we're gonna talk about street and alley first. It's the one on top, should be the one on top. Okay, you're right, street and alley. Okay, so the first column is the revised budget. Um, and the reason we're doing your revised budget is because when we start with the original budget, some things happened where we had employees shifting around and we had to hire contractors and we were coming to council meetings and we said, well, if you cover it, but we had to take it from somewhere else. So this is the revised budget to fix all that. Okay, so that first column is the revised budget. The second column is the original budget. That third column is the change to the original budget. That fourth column is your actuals through February twenty-eighth and twenty-three. There's eight months of actuals in there. And then that last column is what's remaining of the revised budget. So if you take your revised budget less your actuals, that's how much money you've got left to spend through June thirtieth. And then there's just some comments. So on street and alley, your income is basically your sales tax that you get, um, the percentage of from the one that goes to the general fund and then we give a percentage back to street and alley. So you have that as your income for street and alley. Um, you get a little bit of vehicle tax that comes across from Haskell County. Um, the other one is that miscellaneous income and this is something that relates to Michael wherever he's at.
Right here.
You can see that I've got remaining eight hundred seventeen dollars on that last column. That is what Doug used to do starting about April and May where there are certain people that he's, we got an agreement with it, we go mow their lots and then we fill out an invoice and we mail it to them. Some of these people are in Texas, some of them are around and they send us the money for mowing their lots. So that's the reason you really haven't spent that money yet because it's not really happened yet. That's gonna be your April and your May and your June. So it's something we need to pull out his old invoices and get ahold of those people and make sure that we're still in agreement that we're gonna mow their lots.
Okay.
And then we'll invoice them. So I've revised your budget to increase your income by about thirteen hundred dollars. That's just a little, the sales tax is coming in a little bit higher than we, than what we thought and that's just a percentage of what's coming in higher. So, um, that's, there's nothing, other than telling Michael what I just told him, there's nothing really urgent on the income side. On the expense side, on the administration, you can see I revised the budget, I increased your expenses and that's because Sharon had to order some checks the other day and they're about five hundred dollars and we did not budget for those because we only order checks like every two years, you know? So that was why that one's gone up. Your contract services other, this is Maxwell, this is the one, two, three, this is the Oklahoma State auditor, this is the equipment repair guy. And so you can see that that, um, I increased your budget there. You see that went up, but if you look below it on employee related, you can see that your budget went down. That's because your actuals have gone from being an employee related expense to a contract related expense. So you can see that if you look at your, changed your budget, thirty-four-ten and the negative forty-three-hundred, you can see that that has moved. So that's what's happening there, it's just moving what you guys had already agreed to and the actuals are actually happening that way. So the actuals are coming in that you're spending more on the contract side than you are on the employee related side. Okay? So that's just fixing what you guys had already agreed to do. Um, I didn't change your operating expenses, the actuals are coming in the way they're supposed to come in, there's nothing happening. You know, and I put over here in the notes that you've spent six hundred ninety-one dollars in gas on street and alley. Y'all bought some asphalt for twenty-two hundred dollars back in June and you paid for a dead tree removal of fifteen hundred dollars and then there's an arborist leases in there for forty-two hundred dollars. You've only got fifty-one hundred dollars left to spend in operating for street and alley. So the question is, are y'all gonna be ordering asphalt between now and June thirtieth? If you're not gonna be ordering asphalt between now and June thirtieth, then your, your budget's probably fine set the way I've set it on the revised. Utilities, if you look at your actuals, you're only four hundred sixty-nine dollars in the utilities, but you'll see in my note, I'm saying I'm gonna transfer some stuff from general fund. General fund, because we use the debit card to pay utilities, there's no debit card on street and alley. So I've got to do a transfer from general fund over into street and alley and that will happen. That's the reason there's a remaining four thousand dollars to spend when you only spent four hundred sixty-nine dollars. So I just gotta move money. So basically, to sum it up, I've revised your budget and you're gonna end up, the original budget said your income was gonna be seven thousand dollars, seven thousand one hundred sixty dollars. I'm now saying you're, at the end of June, you'll have an income of eighty-six hundred dollars. So you actually gained a little income out of street and alley. And that is attributed to the fact that the employee related expenses are offset by the contract services and the contract services are coming in lower than what you would've paid for the employee that was originally here. So, so, and you can see that if you take the net of the thirty-four-ten and the forty-four-thirty-seven, that's your thousand dollar increase in your income, it's just because of the way you switched that, you gained a thousand dollars. And that's it for street and alley. Okay, is there any questions, any changes? Okay. General fund. So on this one, there's two sheets for general fund. Because if I would've fit all of this on one sheet, you guys couldn't have read it. Because if we're gonna talk about general fund, we're gonna talk about police. So this first sheet, the first section is your actuals through eight-twenty-eight, that's eight months of actuals. Your second section is for revised budget and then the third section is what's remaining of your revised budget to spend for four months and then notes on actuals and, or any notes there. Um, so on your income, you can see that, um, there, the sales tax has increased in your revised budget and you can actually look at the second sheet if you wanna kind of pull it up next to it. You can see that I've actually kind of increased your sales tax. So your sales tax increased, um, on your revised budget and your use tax increased on your revised budget. So there's nothing, on the income section, there's really nothing spectacular. It's just basically increasing in your sales tax, in your use tax. Okay, your expenses is the one that's got a lot of activity going on in it because that's where a lot of y'all's decisions have been, in moving money around. And you'll be glad to know that y'all moved the money around and it's actually working the way y'all wanted it to work. So, or the way y'all agreed for it to work. So, uh, let's actually look at the revised budget one first, it's the one with three sections. And go down to expenses. So on the employee related, your, um, I increased your budget by sixty-eight hundred dollars and that is because of new people, overtime, raises. But we, when we made some of those decisions on the raises, we knew that the sales tax was coming in higher and so y'all made the decision that you knew you could offset with sales tax and that is what is happening. So your budget that's remaining on that is just for what employees you got. There's nothing in there that's spectacular. Your vehicle actuals, um, kinda, it's kinda caught y'all. And this is where y'all need to look at this. So your actuals, I had to revise your budget, you can see that your original budget was ten thousand two hundred, right here, ten thousand two hundred was your revised, was your original budget for vehicles. I've had to revise it to twenty-one thousand. I've had to go up eleven thousand dollars on y'all's vehicles because of how the actuals are coming in. So you've spent seven thousand dollars in gas. You had seventy-one hundred dollars in vehicle and equipment maintenance. And that seventy-one hundred dollars on your police vehicles was a three thousand dollar front end. We replaced some water pumps, replaced air conditioning, worked on power steering and something was wrong with the defroster. And so your actuals on your vehicle maintenance was fourteen thousand dollars for the first eight months. So I had to raise that expense up on your revised budget because you'd already spent more than what your budget was. But we have to keep the police vehicle safe. I mean, you can't, you can't refuse not to fix the police vehicle. So I mean, it's not an option. I mean, it's not, but you did, but that is there. Um, utilities, I've got that transfer of the Skygoes Street and Alley and Water. Um, nothing spectacular about the utilities. The only thing I've seen there is that we used to only pay forty-five dollars a month for phones, for wireless phones. We're now paying a hundred and sixty dollars a month. So we've added some phones to the wireless and I'm not for sure if we're using all of those phones or not. So that, it's not causing, it's not causing you a concern. I just wanted to point that out to y'all that if, do we have phones sitting around, wireless?
Should be only two of them, hers and his.
Well, there's one that's not being used, which belongs to Rick. Now, Rick's not here, that one's not being used. But when I purchased them, it was a package deal.
Contract.
So we can't have that one turned off.
Cause you'll, it'll be a contract.
It's a contract, the boy did a contract that we did.
Okay.
Yeah, and we upgraded to a newer phone, a newer version of the phone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, me and Cheryl, or me and Cheryl sometimes, we can probably use that phone right back here.
Yeah. If you're not gonna be able to cancel it.
Like on things that we need, um,
Text messages.
Text messages and stuff.
Like it, well, on the internet, when they have to have you sign up and you get a code on the end, they text your code in order for you to get access, yeah.
They wanna, they wanna send you a text, so we can use that phone back here.
But if you can't get out of it, I mean, I just wanted to raise that to y'all's attention. It's not causing y'all any actuals problems, it's not causing any budget problems, but I did wanna raise y'all to that attention if that is coming across on the phones. So y'all can decide to, if you can, Chicago. So utilities, there's nothing going on there. Uh, materials and supplies is holding its own, your revised budget, um, did not change your revised budget. Um, we've been watching the spending there, I will tell you that your revised budget on materials and supplies, I adjusted it up seventeen hundred dollars and thirteen hundred of that is for the QuickBooks annual maintenance subscription that we had to pay for. Okay. Um, contract services. If you look at the, um, I did have to go up on contract services twenty-six hundred dollars for the revised budget. Of that, Haskell County Sheriff's Office. Let's check out. Haskell County Sheriff's Office charges eight hundred thirty-five dollars for a jail fee, um, that I hadn't budgeted, but if you go back up here and you look at the police funds, you're actually generating, you generated more police funds than what we thought we would get in the budget. So we might have had a big bust or something there, but anyway, so that wasn't in the budget. But anyway, so that's where that came from. Um, there's really nothing else, y'all can read, y'all can go through and read the comments if you wanna come read the comments. Um, what we done on the revised budget, your budget for general fund was an income of seventy-three thousand dollars. Your police was a negative seventy-one thousand dollars for a net of two thousand dollars, that was your original budget. Your revised budget is almost zero, I mean, it's a combined income of zero. Um, your general fund is eighty-four thousand and your police is a negative eighty-four thousand. And that, the difference on your police from the seventy-one to the eighty-four is driven by the vehicle maintenance. That's already been spent, so you can't do anything about it. Um, so it's just, it's, it didn't change much. Your expenses went up fourteen thousand dollars, but that is offset by the increase in your income in the tax area. So. I think in general fund. If you have any questions, I can answer them. I guess what I'm saying is, you're, you're holding.
Yeah.
You're holding. The, we've had some, we had some glitches of where we've had to move people around, but you covered it. And that was, that was expected. You had some glitches in your vehicle expense, but you covered it. So you've had some glitches in your expenses, but your income covered it with the sales tax. And that's pretty much, that, yeah. So now y'all, whether you want to accept the revised budgets or add to them, change them. Burton.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number nine, vote to go into executive session as per twenty-five O S. Section three oh seven B. One, discussing the employment hiring, appointment promotion, demotion, disciplining or resignation of an individual salary public office or employees to discuss to give Sharon Bird a raise.
Burton.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number ten, vote to go back into regular session. I'm letting you go back into regular session.
Burton.
Yes.
Uh, Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number eleven, vote to give Sharon Bird a raise. No second.
Burton.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number twelve, discuss a vote on what day to do citywide cleanup.
I want to ahead and put this on here and that way we can go ahead and get it on here. But it's usually the weekend before, Old Timer's Day.
Old timers, like May the sixth.
Yeah.
So the weekend before or the Saturday before? Cause it's on Sunday.
First Saturday in.
It's usually, usually the Friday and Saturday of.
Yeah.
Friday and Saturday.
Yes, we usually do it two days.
Okay.
It's also decoration out here.
The first Sunday of May is decoration, it's on that weekend. So if the first is on a Saturday, that's still Old Timer's weekend, right?
Yeah. Uh, first is gonna be on Monday this year.
Old Timer's Day would be on the sixth.
The sixth, yeah.
Okay.
So it'll be like the weekend before.
The weekend before, okay.
But I mean, if we can go ahead and get it on there, or she can go ahead and get it posted and then they could start, if they wanted to, they could start early.
The sixth of May, right there.
It'll be the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
That'd be Friday and Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be April twenty-eighth and April twenty-ninth.
Now would that do that, y'all get a drop off for?
No, no, I go around and pick it up.
Okay.
Yeah, he, he'll get, you get the metal and stuff, don't you?
And it's gotta be, and it's gotta be separated. I mean, every time we, we gotta tell them that it's gotta be separated because if not, they always put it together anyway. I mean, we usually take one try to pick up the metal and the other try to pick up like the household stuff. Take it and burn it somewhere.
And we've got trailers where we can separate y'all. You have any?
Yeah.
Did you ever check our board meeting that month?
I'm not aware of that. But I will.
But, uh, yeah, um, I'll make a motion.
Some of those people use it like for old timer stuff.
Twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of April, the weekend before Old Timer's Day.
I thought they got it when we posted last time, was gonna do that here and check.
She never did call me back.
Burton.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Uh, number thirteen, discuss a vote to install A T M at City Hall.
Jimbo Lawson brought up a deal and asked if we even wanted to put an A T M out, outside here. So that way they wouldn't have to go up to the dispensary or have to run the stewardship to get, get money if they didn't want to pay them with the card.
Or like when they were closed.
Or if they were closed, they're thinking they could just get money out, come around, drop their money in the drop box. But this was brought in to our attention by Jimbo Lawson the other day and we told him we put it on there and discussed it. So I mean, but all he wanted to do is just see if we wanted to put one out here. He'd be the one taking care of it, so we just have it on our property.
Now, would he be liable for it if something was to happen to it?
As far as there's something to ask.
That's one, that's, that's one thing I wanna know too.
Yeah, you didn't make him sign something.
He said couldn't make it tonight, but if you had any questions, y'all could call him.
Good one.
But he couldn't make it here tonight.
So wait, any questions, call him?
Yeah. Didn't answer anything you need to know.
Yeah, I wish he could've been here though, we could've asked him that.
But if, if, if we're gonna be responsible for it, I think.
Yeah, if we're gonna be.
That's, that's too much of a liability. Cause you read about it, hear about it all the time.
Carrying it all.
Where they tie a chain around him, sure come out.
Well, the only way you'd be able to do it here is keep it, no, you'd have to put it in an enclosed.
Yeah, I understand that.
Like they had to up, or pure seven, whenever they run a chain through this front doors and put it on to it, drug it through the store. They literally did, they literally took and run a chain through the front door, to the back of the store, threw it and drug it through the store and out the front doors, down the highway. And they ended up putting it in a enclosed case. Concrete again. Don't mean, uh, we do need to find out about that though, first, before I.
I agree.
Do you want me to call?
Yeah, please. Right away.
Is there optional, what kind of A T M?
It'll be his A T Ms. And it'd be, I mean, it'd be set right like what he's got up there, I don't know what he's got on.
Four dollars.
Is it four dollars? I mean, he says like going to the bank.
Two, two zero, where's his?
Two zero's his too.
Okay, yeah, and this is stand, stand free, I just thought maybe.
And he's the, and, and that's the only A T M that's here and I mean, it'll be right here when you're closed and be right here.
We don't get that many people that comes in there to use it that doesn't have a card.
Yeah, I know it.
Yeah. Yeah, you occasionally have somebody come in there that that's all they wanna use, but, so, I mean, I don't know, I think there'd be a lot more people using it if they didn't have to come into it, for the people that don't have a card.
I feel most of the.
But I wouldn't wanna be liable for it. Later.
Oh, well, you'd be liable.
I had a question.
Especially, especially to be outside. Especially with it being outside.
Yeah, and he wasn't gonna give us some, uh, fee.
He do it now, yeah.
Living here. That's another question.
He's, he's the one that's done the A T M fee. I mean, all I know, we just get the, you know, the, the business of.
Why another?
Okay.
I mean, he don't care, y'all don't care, I think.
Not that, I know of.
And y'all just in the inside. I mean, I don't think, that's the reason why, we just wanna know, you know, that way we can have one here just like I said, you know, in case somebody wants to put their money in there and we're closed and they're closed up here.
You can't put money in the A T M.
No, I'm talking about in the.
Oh.
Drop box.
Yeah, they can't pay you through the A T M, they can just get money out.
Man, I would always want somebody else to put an A T M right here somewhere.
Everybody's scared too, I think Lions did, used to have one, but they, it kept getting broken down.
Oh, they never did.
Oh, they didn't, I think there was, I mean, it's just, being in Kyoto in the thieving, you're scared to put one in.
Y'all would be liable for anything happen, if it takes another. He said, y'all can draw it up if you're gonna do, if you wanted to make a little money out of it yourself, then they could bump up the fee, if not, then they could just sit, you know? So, if you don't, if it not work up.
Well, I mean, if we bump it up too, I mean, then they're, they're not gonna do that.
Yeah, he said, but they would bump it up like fifty cents or something.
Cause I think, I think you go to the casino, I think it's about four twenty-five or four fifteen anyway. Use their A T M.
Is it?
At the casino.
Yeah, I think the bank is what, like three and a half?
Three and a half.
He said if you wanna make money, he'd give you a dollar transaction.
He'd give us a dollar transaction?
What is his transaction fee gonna be?
So what would his, what would y'all?
So what would yours fee be? Three dollars.
Okay, so it'd be four dollars and that's gonna be a dollar fee?
Three dollars plus the dollar, right? Is it three dollars altogether or is it three dollars plus the?
So it'd be four dollars and that's gonna be the dollar and he'll give you three.
It'd be a three dollar fee and then he'll give you, y'all a dollar for each transaction.
So three dollars.
So three dollars.
So pretty much a one a normal one.
That's better than going anywhere else.
Yeah, that, that's cheaper to go anywhere else, I mean, that.
And see you with profit.
I mean, if we're not reliable, we, we can sign, you have him to sign up an agreement saying we're not reliable for it?
And your property.
I would say wow, I mean, huh?
And your property in that agreement.
Sorry.
And we'll just have, we'll have Sharon to write up something on it and have him just come up there and sign it and we'll sign it, have it addressed. We'll let him know, we'll let him know.
Y'all vote first?
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we're, just kind of, we're gonna, that's what I was fixing to say, we're, we're fixing to vote. But, I mean, it sound like a good idea to me, I mean,
I just.
Cause he'd want to put it, you know where he said he wanted to put it, right out there on the front, or, or, where I parked at? That way they can pull through here, get it, and stuff, and, and.
He drove one, he said it after that other one.
No, we can't do that. Because then we'd have to come through here and then chuckle back where I come to that.
Yeah.
He'll probably put it where he feels like it's gonna be the safest at.
Yeah.
Something, you know, you oughta thought about is you may have to draw up some kind of easement for him, set that machine on city property.
Because it's not yours.
And then put your no liability clause in that easement in contract.
Is he gonna have power out there?
There shouldn't be fire running out there.
So Joey really needs to write it.
Yeah, Joey will have to write that, yeah.
Joey needs to be the one that really writes up the agreement, unless he's got an, he already has an agreement. Yeah, that would be, that would be Joey.
Does he have an agreement?
Do you already have an agreement? Do you already have an agreement?
A, a standard agreement that.
Really goes out or something? He said no, but he do want it, if you want one.
Yeah, we'll have to have one.
Have to enjoy it.
We'll have to have, we'll have to have one draw it up and have Joey to look at, you know, get.
Okay, that's it, they're gonna have George, uh, throw it up.
So that's a city property, you own on city property.
Okay. He's got a proposal. Do you want him to bring that?
I still think we need to get Joy involved with it.
Yeah, with it being city property, we need to have her.
Being on city property, we need to, need to contact Joy.
Tell him, tell him to get a hold of Joy.
They said let me get on Joy.
I mean, we're not gonna.
With it being city property, that part, yeah, for a while or something.
Put this off the bill.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
And then come, come back and actually get Joy to write something up.
So you wanna table it or what?
How do y'all wanna do that?
Table it.
Yeah, we'll table it right now until we get, have Joy to write something up on, for an easement and.
All right, number fourteen, discuss about to purchase rechargeable and non, non-rechargeable flashlight for the fire department. Do you have that information, Sharon?
No, I have it right here.
No, he's got it right there in his hand.
Uh, what we're looking to purchase are Streamlight Survivor lights that clip onto our bunker gear. Uh, we've been looking for a while, and we finally found them, and they're seventy dollars each. Uh, and I would like to get fourteen of those, uh, that, that gets everybody that usually comes up to the fire covered. And we're not gonna get those in rechargeable, just due to the fact that they may sit there for a month or two and not be used, and rechargeable will be, a lot will be dead. And then going dead like that, you know, the batteries go bad on them, so they will be like a nine volt, or a nine volt, a double A, four double A battery pack. And then, uh, we would like five Streamlight Stinger rechargeable flashlights. Uh, that will sit in a five bank, uh, charging station, in the station, and, uh. It'll charge all, keep all five of them, that way we can just come in at night and everybody driving a truck can grab a flashlight and go. Uh, we looked at getting some rechargeables that would stay in our vehicles, but we've got five fire trucks that got main kilns on them. When you turn that main kiln, you don't have no juice to keep your flashlight charged. Uh, but the rechargeable flashlights are a hundred and thirty dollars a piece, and the charger station is two hundred and fifty for charging all five of them at one time.
What's your total amount you're looking at there, Brian?
One of the, one of the bucket ones he was talking about, one of the bucket ones he was talking about, we got the ones that go down here. And of course, I can talk to somebody like this right here. That way we can at least turn, instead of having a lot in your eyes. You can at least turn and still see something about nearby.
You're looking at the bank thing, it's, and bank balance is thirty eight thousand. It's not on that sheet, but it's thirty eight thousand. No, it's not on that sheet, I've seen you looking at it, but it's thirty eight thousand, you have to look in the other sheets.
We're looking at eighteen eighty. I, I would like to bump that to two thousand in case, there should not be any shipping on that, but you never know what kinda shipping fee or something you'd give. Uh, put on, stuff like that.
Yeah, that budget does not include fire department, they would be, but, but in the bank, they got their heat out.
Yeah. But that'll, we'll issue, we're gonna make numbers on the individual fire lots for firefighters, and issue everybody one and. And if they quit or, or give it off on those, that's right, they'll be responsible for that, and we've kinda been lax in passing about that, just handing stuff out, but we're.
Well, it's, it's part of your, your equipment that you need to do your job.
Yep.
They should have serial numbers on them.
Do what?
They should have serial numbers on them, either they're.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll put a number if we have to engrave a number into them, or we can put our name on them, and that way if one turns us missing and they find it somewhere, we'll know it's ours.
I make a motion to repurchase rechargeable flashlight for the fire department. And then the non-refundable flashlights.
Non-chargeable.
Non-chargeable, non-refundable. And the charter.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Uh, number fifteen, discuss about to purchase air tanks for the fire department.
Okay, we've, I took five of our aluminum air tanks to get a hydro test on them, we're supposed to have a hydro test every five years. Two of our aluminum tanks from nineteen seventy-eight has failed. And we have currently nine, uh, carbon fiber tanks, and these carbon fiber tanks has a fifteen year life, from date of manufacture. And, uh, after fifteen years, they won't test them anymore. And currently, we have two of those carbon fiber tanks that we're, we can, have to take out of service, we can use them for training, but we can't use them in a fire. Uh, and, uh, we have three more that have, uh, go out this year, but as long as I get them down there and get the test on them. By June, we can milk five more years out of them. And then I've got two more that's got two years left. Uh, but we're, uh, I, only aluminum tanks, I can get, uh, hydro tested aluminum tanks for a hundred and eighty-five dollars a piece. And these carbon fiber tanks, uh, I have found a place here out of Colorado, it's a different brand, but they're brand new carbon tanks that have a fifteen year life on them. Uh, for six hundred and ninety-five plus shipping. And, uh, what I would like to do is replace the two, I, I think we've got a good ratio of aluminum tanks to carbon fiber tanks. And the weight difference is about fifteen, sixteen pounds a piece difference. Uh, it costs too much, no more than what we use them to have hundred percent carbon fiber tanks, it don't make sense for us. But with, for extra carry on the truck or things like that, they're just fine, and I said, the one that failed was from nineteen seventy-eight. So, I mean, uh, it, it, we got good use of life out of them. And, uh, what I would like to do now, right now, is, uh, to purchase two more aluminum tanks and two carbon fiber tanks. And then as next year, maybe purchase two or three more carbon fiber tanks. Uh, you know, as they, you know, just one or two a year, till, for every other year or something, then we kinda roll through those. But we'll have, for seven hundred dollars, you're looking at fifty dollars a year per tank. So, the, the, the other brand was six hundred and forty-one dollars a piece. So we can buy two of this different brand, and I, I've been on the phone for the last three days, non-stop with them, and they basically told me it's like buying a pair of, uh. Of Nike or Reeboks versus a pair of New Balance tennis shoes. Uh, they're probably gonna last you just as long as you're paying for the name.
Yeah, so you want two aluminum tanks and two carbon fiber?
Yeah, for right now, and, and we're gonna continue testing these, and, you know, if we add some more, uh, we have, uh. Let me list, we have, uh, three more aluminum tanks, uh, to test, and, uh, once, once we get those tested. I mean, if they all pass, we're good, uh, but I would like to maintain the amount of tanks that we have. It's, it's a, it's a good balance. So right now, two aluminum tanks and two carbon fiber tanks.
They go off on fire or something like that, I want something I can trust.
Exactly.
Well, the carbon fiber tanks, they, they, they won't, uh, they won't test them, we're not supposed to fill them after fifteen years. But it's not, like I said, the aluminums, the ones that we had that passed were for nineteen seventy-seven. So, we're, we're, we're still using them, so.
And you can make the, uh, you can retain the other ones that you're replacing for training?
Training, yeah, I mean, they'd be, you know, we can put them all, as long as we're not in a fire, but we like practice and stuff, we can use those. And, and not have to, not have to fill up or mess with our other tanks.
Right. Just get them used to carrying them and wearing.
Like we did that one there.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we purchased two aluminum tanks and two carbon fiber tanks for the fire department.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
Do you have that paper for?
Oh, while we're at it, can I give you a little update? We put two more new firefighters on this last week, but we've had two re, resign as well, so. We're steady as she goes.
Did you get those where, they were put on the, what's the call?
Uh, they're being put on, they're getting turned in right now. One of them's not eligible for retirement, and that lady don't like to hear me on the other end of the phone, cause I, I'm pushing them to let us, let them draw retirement, be eligible for fifty-five going on. And they could get up to at least ten years, but cause the number of people we got to choose from is getting long in the days.
We got, we got four in our team right now.
Four or five.
But I, I am gonna say though, I mean, we got a good, good fire department, we got, I got, right over Brian, I got, got you guys, I trust.
Other than that, everything else going alright?
Everything's doing great. Yep.
Your daddy had to go some far down here, get that deal without.
Yep.
Been many years ago.
About forty years ago, yep, I remember well that.
All right, moving on, number sixteen, discuss and vote to return over repair bill to O-MAG for trailer at three oh nine southeast eight.
Turn the repair bill to O-MAG. I don't even wanna see it. Hmm? I don't see it.
Do you make the motion to? One second.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
I'm saying.
Number seventeen, discuss and vote to put up no parking signs in front of gymnasium and allow the. Allow the school to use their temporary signs and, uh, for instance, world can be your school.
To get that country draw.
I understand, I, I think mine up here that was.
Okay.
Here, here's how you fix that.
Yeah.
That's a topo. That's all.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, they, they, that's what they talked about here, we're not.
Yeah, she was here, I believe, two months ago, and the question is. I make a motion, we put up no parking signs in front of the gymnasium, allow the school to use the temporary ones.
One second.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number eighteen, new business? Uh, number nineteen, no business. Twenty adjourned.
No, it's eighteen, I can't, you skip past, there was no business?
Pardon me?
What's, okay, no new business for city or, you don't have enough time for, people say anything?
Nothing that's on that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and he said adjourn, and I was like, no, you.
The new business is what y'all were supposed to.
Yeah, she was supposed to set him out, he went fast, I'm like, what? Oh, I thought maybe something else happening, right? And what was going on?
We can go back to new business.
And it's new business.
We haven't adjourned off this yet, so.
I know, you hadn't, I wasn't mentioning. I'm sorry. You were moving fast, I was like, hey.
Well, my business is, I had my sister move down here with me, and they just sold their home in Washington State, so now her fiance stays here, and they really wanted to live in Kyoto. But the street's over there, you have to drive through, I don't know, I don't know, maybe the cleanup days, all that, those houses are gonna be cleaned up, or is that what's happening?
The eyesore.
Yeah, so what are we gonna do about that? Cause that's why she wanted to live here, I'm gonna live here.
We've had that on.
Has been an ongoing issue for many, many years.
Can we call the health department to have it condemned? That's what we do in Washington State. That's what would happen, and child, child authority for child health as well. Cause it's, child health is welfare, I'm sorry, I understand we do have people who are of different levels of living, but still.
And I'm on the way, nobody's living, you know, but.
But still, it's not sanitary, it is not of code, it is not of child, child wel, welfare. Child welfare should be involved, health department should be involved. It's falling around there, falling down around you.
So I would, I just maybe thought that.
And I, there was, there's a moment at the other end of Shepherd, that I looked at, so. I looked at the other house on the, on the other Shepherd to purchase, but I'm not gonna purchase a home here when I have to walk, drive through a street where I have to see this garbage on the way in. I'm sorry, it's, it's not fair, it's, there's lots of prices. It's, it's really an eyesore, I'm not, and I don't know if, if it's your fam, someone's family, I'm sorry to touch that on toast, it's just not fair. You know, you can't come here and think, oh, I can make a good, I can have a good retirement or good living here, cause I am, I'm semi-retired, he's retired, and we have to pass by that every day.
So I don't know if it's, see if we're gonna have a class for. Ask, you know, like, you know, you gotta do something by a certain time, you know, cause at least pick up the yard, I'll give you the side, I'll tell you, at least pick up the yard.
Yeah, it's down the street from you, if, if you sell your, try to sell your property tomorrow, you won't get any value out of your property, because of what people will see.
What she's talking about.
Yeah, it's on the, it's between Shepherd and six, Shepherd and fifth.
We've been, we've been on them.
And, okay, so the health department or child CPS can't get involved and it gets clear? No, I'm just saying, I'm not, I, I don't, I'm, in my heart of hearts, I feel bad, I'm a mandatory reporter because I am of the healthcare field, I'm a mandatory reporter. So I should be reporting that house daily, for the kids, for the health and welfare, the adults that I live in there, the senior care of the people living there. So, we were told to come here first.
Down meeting, just to see how.
They said come to down meeting, where you like handle it. Where you voice your voice, your opinion, and I'm voicing it, it is strong, and it's not right.
And we appreciate you.
And very strong, it's.
So when I heard the cleanup day, I'm like, oh, maybe that's where they're gonna.
That's one of the cleanup days and clean up there?
Yeah, it won't happen.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm a little nervous.
Okay.
We tried and we, we, we find them and.
We tried and we, we, we find them and, but it's, I don't know, we don't know.
It's a demo crew that needs to come in and buy them.
Yeah, it's.
I'm sorry, it needs to be mowed down and brushed away. So.
Gets fallen apart anyway.
Yeah, when you see the daylight in the house, there's a problem. And the garbage rolling out of the house, there's a problem.
That was my, that was my new business, I'm done.
That's the new business. And I am looking for a house, that's new business, so if anyone has a decent house that's, if it's in the country zone, I'll buy it, but I won't live in town.
And I want her to.
I won't live in town because I don't wanna look at ice swords every day and I don't wanna feel like I live in a garbage can. In a garbage can. And I'll be coming to these meetings until we find out something. Till I figure out.
Is it better in Washington State, though?
Oh, girl, they're in the snow and stuff.
It's better in Washington State, if we have any.
I'm planning on fishing tomorrow.
If we had a home in my neighborhood that was in that condition, the state would come in and they would take that home down and relocate those people or either put them in a hotel so they can do better. But they cannot live that way. Not when you're hosting a picnic in the front yard with the kids in the barbecue pit, that's not cool. I, 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 I just, my stomach turning, my heart aches every time I drive through. We just go around now. And we live, if you don't know, we live on the top of the hill on Broadway here and, uh, next to. And so, it's like, we have to almost go that way if we wanna go take a shortcut.
I'm on the other side of the truck, it isn't so bad. Over here, yeah, on this side, I got mine. We work on it a little bit, here and there.
Yeah.
Yeah, trash fell out of the trash can last night.
No, we're not worried about that, we're talking about the trash falling out the house.
All right, we're moving on, number twenty adjourned.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Over to KPWA, county Kyoto, March ninth, twenty twenty-three, it's seven, six fifty-seven P.M. Call order, call roll.
I could be. Burton?
Yes.
Gah? Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number three, discuss the vote to approve all minutes for February twenty twenty-three.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number four, discussing vote to approve all February twenty twenty-three bills for water pump.
Make a motion to approve.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number five, discuss the vote to approve all February twenty twenty-three funds for sewer fund.
Make a motion to approve.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number six, discuss the vote on revised budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay. So, I'm just going straight to this sheet that says revised budget, original budget, and the change in the budget. Okay, this one, uh, had a lot more changes to it. Basically, the income didn't change, just for the little bit of sales tax increase. In your expenses, this is one where we did a lot of moves between employee costs and contract services other. So, that would be employee-related here and then this contract services other here. And so, this is basically when we had to hire DEQ support and contractors to come in, but we also got to cut costs on the employee side. So, you can see that your employee-related expenses went down by eighteen thousand dollars from the original budget, but your contract went up by seventy-four hundred dollars. Um, those two offset to the good. Um, the only, the other issue is down here, water purchased, it's the one from the bottom, and I had to increase that budget, um, by fifty-five hundred dollars. And, uh, the only thing that I could see that that was causing, 'cause we used, we used the gallons projected to do our budget to PVIA. And the only thing that I could see that was causing us to spend more money on our water purchase is more blowouts. We've had a few more fires and so that when I've done the water, we've had a little bit more loss of water than we've had before. But I think it's because we put procedures in that we're blowing out the lines a little bit more than we used to, maybe. And, and I think we've had a couple of fires, so that is actually fifty-five hundred dollars. But that is still offset by the fact that our employee costs on a revised budget is lower than our original budget. So, the result of that was that we have actually increased the income in water and sewer by ten thousand dollars. So, it's the loss of employees created a drop of eighteen thousand dollars, but that was offset by an increase in your contract for DEQ and DEQ support and the water purchased. So, that's pretty much sums up what's going on in the water and sewer. And you can kind of see that there is an increase in income just by watching the cash over here in your water and sewer accounts. I mean, you, you've kind of got pretty good numbers over there in the cash side. So, that's all that's really going on in water and sewer. Employee, employee costs went down, but offset by contract labor and water purchased. With an add of ten thousand dollars to the good.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
Number seven, vote to an executive session. For title twenty-five, OS section three oh seven D, number one, discussing the employment hiring, employment promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of an individual salary public office or employee to discuss to keep sharing verbal raise.
The reason why it's on both sides for the pay, pay out of both sides.
This is a big motion to do the same.
You motion to do the same.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Skip it down to number ten, discuss the vote to review and approve work order KPA dash twenty-three dash oh on and agreement for our waste water system improvement project. That is this thing here. Now, this is just, uh, approving the, the engineering contractor fees and everything that, that engineer.
Everything we've already got going.
Yeah, yeah. That's for, uh, for my equipment. The engineer, the project rush tentative, miscellaneous costs, home testing, everything. Yeah, she's already signed it.
I don't know. Make a motion to approve it.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number eleven, discussing approve, for approval of final pay application. That is.
That's the other page.
The other part of it.
Yeah, we probably gotta approve both of them before they can do anything.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
My second.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number twelve, discuss the vote for approval of change order number two. It is this, this one here, change order, subtracting six hundred dollars off of the original deal with some new four-inch PVC. Four chenine.
Also, there's.
Yeah, they're subtracting six hundred dollars off of them.
Yeah, they, it was, ended up not being as far as what they thought, so it ended up being less of.
Oh, okay.
When they laid out that pot out there.
That's good, okay. My second.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number thirteen, discuss the vote for acceptance and approval of closeout paperwork.
Yeah, we gotta take and do all this, take and make sure we get everything going.
Get everything going.
I'll make a motion to approve it, the closeout paperwork.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number fourteen, discuss the vote to install ATM in city oil.
Yeah, we're gonna table that.
Number fifteen, discuss the vote on what day to do citywide cleanup.
Yes, the same as what we go the first weekend of the fourth or old time.
I don't know, but this is my first time on this.
Number sixteen, discuss the vote to approve a repair bill to O-MAG for trailer at three oh nine southeast eighth. Gonna do the same as we did on the city. All right, number seventeen, discuss the vote to have P and K equipment of John Deere infection repair the Bekoshin backhoe, backup generator in the amount of approximately about eight thousand dollars. This thing is, has been making oil. In other words, the diesel fuel is leaking into the oil system. And we suspect, highly suspect, we've done, uh, numerous, uh, questioning and everything like that. We believe the injection pump has gone out, is leaking by. The, the diesel fuel is leaking down into the oil system. If we lose that thing, we're looking at over sixty thousand dollars to replace it. And it's our backup power for Bekoshi pumps.
It needs to be fixed, I mean, that's maintenance, it needs to be, it needs to be fixed. Hey, that's, that, no answer for us about it, I mean, that's, that's like everything else. If we lose it, we lose everything. So, I mean, it needs to be fixed. And it's cheaper to get it repaired now than to have to replace it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'll make a motion to get it repaired.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yeah, but if we don't get it repaired, I mean, the town's gonna be off grid if we don't.
Right now, you got the money, go away, you had the money.
I said, right now, you have it, you need to fix the eight thousand dollars, so go away, you got the money.
Instead of paying the sixty thousand.
Number eighteen, new business. Y'all have anything, anything on the water department? Sewer department?
I can't, I can't fix that.
O business. Number eighteen, nineteen, no business. And number twenty adjourned.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Burton?
Yes.
Starsman?